It's nine o'clock. Just to let you know, the judge is on vacation up in Colorado where it's nice and cool, so I'll be the judge for today. Today's Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. It's 9:00 AM. We're in the central jury room with the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street. And at this time, we do have a quorum, so I'm going to call on Pastor Lowell Erkenback if he wouldn't come up and do our invocation.
Thank you. Everyone, please bow your heads. Father, I just thank you for your grace and mercy which you pour out on us daily, Lord. I ask you to continue to lead us and guide us, Lord. Lord, just bring wisdom and vision to these men who are making decisions for all of Hood County, Lord. I ask for unity across this county, Lord, that we may come together in one spirit and one mind, Lord. Lord, I also ask you to protect our first responders right now as they battle constantly the grass fires that have been so difficult this year, Lord. Lord, just give them rest, give them strength. Lord, we ask for rain, Lord. Just come in and heal our land, Lord. We just thank you so much, Lord. Continue to bring us closer to you. Give us new revelation daily in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. If you would, please join me in the prayers. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the pledge, great to live Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the unique Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. We've got three and four, so. Okay, let's see. The first thing on the agenda then is special presentations, and it doesn't look like we have any. Service awards, we don't have any. So the next thing on the agenda is citizens' comments at large. Anybody that wants to speak open on comments at large, please turn in a form with the sheriff, and the sheriff will give it to the county clerk, and then it'll be presented to me. Right now, unless there's more coming, I have four requests on comments at large. We normally make it five minutes each or a maximum of 30 minutes, and if we've only got four, then that would fit within the... Let's see, I've got another one coming. Is that comments at large? So I've got five. Five, that would be 25 minutes, so that would still fit. We allow five minutes for each person to make comments on comments at large. And the first one I have signed up is Donna Cole.
Good morning, gentlemen. It's that time again. It's Jesus Reigns time. So I wanted to tell you, Jesus Reigns is a worldwide community of believers whose heart is to see Jesus Christ honored and high lifted up to help transform this nation. I've laid on each one of your desks up there a pamphlet, and you can put it on the door of your church or anywhere that can be seen. But this is the Year of No Compromise, and we first will start out with a praise parade. It starts at 11:00 AM in the parking lot across from Decker Gym, or utterly known as the G.I.S.D. Parking Lot. And in that parade, there's going to be floats from different churches, and we are in the process of contacting churches that are in Lapan, Tolar, and here in Hood County. Even some churches are presenting dancers, flag teams. There's a youth group that has unicycles. You can decorate your cars and pickups. And in this parade, it will end at Hewlett Park. And that's on September the 10th. So please put that date in. Remember that, September the 10th. And there's going to be praise and worship celebration. It starts at 1:00 PM. There's going to be speakers and several bands that'll be playing. Also, our food trucks will be available, so if you want to stay all day, you have access to food. Down at the very bottom, it gives you my pastor's name. He is the Texas Regional Director for Jesus Reigns, and he's inviting every church to be honored at this gathering that we're having. And we had a great time last year. Just matter of fact, there were people that were saved, and that was a good thing for everybody. But keep that date in mind, September the 10th, Jesus Reigns. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, number two, we have Dorsey Meder. Dorsey, Darcy, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Close up, close.
I'll fix it.
Okay.
My name is Dorsa Meder. Good morning, Commissioners Andrews, Cotton, Wilson, and Eagle. My name is Dorsa Meder, and I live in Hood County, and I'm Vice President of the Laguna Trace Owners Association located off of Highway 51 North across the lake, Granberry Bridge 51. I'm here representing 206 property owners of Laguna Trace Owners Association, a subdivision located in Precinct 4. I spoke to you at the workshop on March 28th of this year, reference to Tommy's Convenience Store starting the progress of building a store gas station in front of our subdivision. This location is in the city of Granbury's ETJ, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. I told you then about the concerns and that there needs to be some type of oversight on this new building. I spoke at a workshop on July 7th on the joint meeting with the City of Granbury, City Council, and Mayor, and Hood County Commissioners to discuss the ETJ and discuss some type of new agreement. I expressed the need to move forward this new agreement, as there has been movement on the site, starting the process with utilities being installed on the property. I attended yet another meeting on July the 26th with the City of Granbury Development and Public Works Directors and Staff, along with Hood County Development Clint Head and Commissioner Eagle and Jeanie Stacks. There is still no movement on the ETJ agreement between the city and the county. I'm here today to file an official petition of the homeowners of 188 signatures to prevent this building of Tommy's in front of our subdivision. We are here to express our concerns again about the need to get this agreement in place as soon as possible. As of this date, the contractor is starting to build forms, forms for the building at this property site. We respectfully request that this court to move forward with a new agreement between the City of Granbury and the Commissioners Court of Hood County by signing this agreement that Mr. Clint Head, Director of Development, has ready and written for over three months. This is ready for your signature, and this will force the city to respond in 45 days. I believe that's correct. You have to take action and quit kicking the can down the road. Your people need you to take immediate action. I'd like to restate our concerns. In case you forgot, which I'm sure you haven't, the potential for gasoline released into the lake and into our drinking water well system, which will create a serious hazard to life, health, and environment of the residents of Laguna Trace. It will increase the traffic to the area and possible increase accidents and serious accidents, additional trash and discarded along Highway 51, which we already have a litter control group now picking up because it's so bad. And then, of course, the light pollution. But our main concern is our drinking water well so near the lake, so near our houses. If it was your house, what would you do? Thank you for your time today. I appreciate you letting us speak. And I have the petition with 188 signatures. Where did I give that to?
County clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And number three, we have Thomas Grothaus. Grothehaus?
Pretty close.
Close? Okay.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. It is Thomas Grothehaus. I go by Tom. I'm also from Laguna Trace. I'm on the HOA board there, have a property there. And I'm going to echo some of Dorsa's concerns, specifically Abe Landing is doing a large expansion. We have a new subdivision going in at 567 and 51, and supposedly, there's going to be a lot of work done on 377. We think there's going to be a lot of traffic increase on Highway 51 heading in and out of town with all this going on, and that's right where Tommy's is going in, at the entrance to our subdivision. Our concern is there are really no traffic controls being planned there, no turning lanes, no stop sign, no lights, nothing. And we have over 200 residents there, many of them elderly, and it's already rather unsafe trying to get out. Tommy's is going to have a single entrance exit, and we think we're going to have serious traffic issues compounding, and it'll be too late to get a handle on it after he's already completed his construction. Second concern is with drainage. As Dorsa said, he's going to be putting in a large concrete slab, gas tanks under there. We're concerned about drainage. Is it going to creep over onto our private roads, causing damage to those roads, making them impassable? And again, the concern about gas leakage to our water well. Finally, I think we're also concerned about waste disposal. It's not a very big area, and we haven't gotten any clarity on how he's going to dispose of the waste, septic, tie into city system. We're just getting no response. He's been stonewalling for months and months, and we'd like to, you know, have some cooperation, understand what's going on. So I think the gist of my protest here is to reiterate Dorsa's concerns and encourage that ETJ to get something going, some clarity on, you know, who's in charge, who's going to make sure due diligence is taken. And that's it for me. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next to speak is Michelle Grothehaus.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us speak. I'll be honest with you, I didn't realize I was signing.
Put the mic up just a little bit, if you would.
I didn't realize I was signing up to speak, but there's not much I can say. I'm actually Tom's wife, and I live at 422 Grenada Calais Court. As an individual with all the other petitioners, we are very concerned about what's going on with Tommy's and, you know, our water system, the traffic. I can't really say much more than what Dorsa and Tom has already reiterated, so I'm just going to say ditto with what they've said as far as our major concerns about our residents of Laguna Trace and ourselves. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have Nanette Samson.
It's a beautiful day today, maybe not quite as hot as it has been, so pray for rain. Over the past several days, I've spent many hours analyzing the proposed 2023 budget and the changes from the original 2022 budget that was posted on the web and approved by you on September 14th, 2021. Before I go into details, I'd like to say something about the current economy and where we have been in 2022. I think we can agree that 2022, the valuations were an anomaly. The county cannot count on valuations increasing 20 to 30% in a normal year. In fact, the housing market is showing signs of weakness, and by historical measures, we are currently in a recession. Additionally, as reported by the New York Federal Reserve last week, U.S. household debt has surpassed $16 trillion for the first time ever during the second quarter of this year. With the U.S. Senate and soon to be the House passing another enormous $740 billion tax and spend bill, we should be cautious about an even further weakness in the economy and how that would impact the valuations in the years to come. My suggestion is to hedge the downside risk, preparing a budget to be able to withstand the downturn in the economy. What I'm passing out now shows a 20% reduction in the proposed increase in expenses. This is a modest decrease but would provide the county with a hedge against the coming So looking at the sheet provided, the full year 2023 proposed expense of $36,981,118 for an increase of $1,368,780, or a 3.84% increase over last year's approved budget. Taking a modest 20% haircut on the 1.3 million increase brings the proposed expense to $36,707,362, which is still a 3.07% increase over the 2022 original budget. Going over the line items in detail, there are line items that could be adjusted to be more in line with historical trends and the current year forecast, so getting to $36,707,362 is very doable. In closing, I would like to make a suggestion that would help taxpayers compare year-over-year changes. I actually polled the folks in Precinct 2, and by far, the taxpayers would like to see the original budget, the 2022 budget, or whichever year we're in, that was approved by the Commissioners Court, along with the current full year budget. So the one that's currently posted is the budget as it sits today with changes and adjustments that have happened throughout the year. This would provide taxpayers with apples-to-apples comparison of the new proposed budget and show the changes to each of the line items as it stands now. I hope you will consider these suggestions as you work through the budget process in setting the tax rate. Thank you for your time.
Okay, that's all for citizens' comments at large. Item B, citizens' comments pertaining to agenda items only. Again, if you want to speak on a specific agenda item, before we get to that agenda, you need to fill out a participation form with the sheriff, and he'll give it to the county clerk, and then bring it up to me. So make sure you do that before we get to an item that you want to speak on. So after that, the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any other Commissioners that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, could I hear an appropriate motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Eagle to accept the consent agenda, and second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass 100%, 4-0. Okay, so that gets us through that. Let's go down to businesses to be discussed and considered for approval. First up is Road Ops. Mr. Lind, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is our annual certification of county-maintained mileage in the county. I placed on your desk, actually, it's a copy of what you'd be signing later, but on the second page is the amount of miles in each precinct since August 1st of 2021. And that last page is just showing what roads were added and their mileage. Of course, this year, we did not remove any from the system, so the mileage does come up to 464 and 1/4 miles for road mileage for Hood County. Road Operations recommends that you approve the certification.
Okay, very good. May I have an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I think the motion may be approved, but...
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Andrews to approve the certification, and a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any further discussion? If not, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Okay, passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Development, Mr. Clint Head.
Good morning, Commissioners. The only item I have today is a public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan of Hewitt Estates in Precinct 3.
Okay, so here at 9:21 AM, we will proceed into a public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Head.
This property is located at 5809 Walnut Creek Drive in Granbury and proposes to create six single-family lots. Proposed concept plan is located in the water quality district and will be served by a mudwater and onsite sewage facilities. The concept plan proposes to construct 329 linear feet of 2-inch hot mix asphalt streets. All the lots are just a little over 1 acre in size, and there will be fire hydrants installed for fire protection. There are no variances associated with this concept plan at this time. All comments have been addressed, and if nobody has any comments, then staff recommends approving the concept plan of Hewitt Estates as presented after you close the public hearing.
Okay, if nobody else has any comments, I'll close the public hearing at 9:23 AM. Go back into Commissioners Court, and I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, you know, the concept plan for Hewitt Estates, lots 1 through 6.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve the concept plan for Hewitt Estates, and a second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass 4-0.
Thank you.
You guys are good. Next, financials. News kid.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. For this court, the invoices total $1,770,112.34. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all these invoices and documents and recommend payment. We also have provided a list of payments over $10,000, and the biggest one on there is the fifth payment for Crescent Bypass, so we're on our way to getting that paid off. Does anyone have any questions regarding these invoices or documents presented?
That's the fifth payment of 10?
Of 11.8 million, yes.
No, is that the fifth payment?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Fifth payment of 10.
So this gets us halfway there.
Yes, sir.
I hope they open that up pretty soon.
Oh, my God. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bills.
A motion by Commissioner Eagle to approve the pay the bills.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 4-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, next thing on the agenda is item C miscellaneous. The first one is to pursue to Local Govern Code 152014 to take appropriate action for the county judge to draw names for salary grievance committee from a pool of citizens who have served on the grand jury in Hood County during the preceding calendar year. We did this a couple weeks ago, and evidently, they didn't get enough volunteers, so we're going to get another group of volunteers to see if they will serve on the grievance committee. And I will draw the names. I will give the envelope to you, and I'll... I guess I read the names, don't I? No other way to do that. You just know who we're on there. All right, number one is Deborah Lee. Number two is Micah Williams. Number three is James Nairmore. Next is Mary Reeby. That was number four, five. Next is Annette Hardrobe. Come on out of there. Next is Jack Hill. Okay. This will be nine?
Eight.
Oh, eight. Number eight is Wendy Riley. And number nine is Yvette Napier. And 10, is that the last one? Number 10 is Danny Johnson. One more? Okay. And then number 11 is Samuel Perez. And those will be the people that we will ask if they want to volunteer for the grievance committee. Thank you. I don't think we need to... Because I did, I don't think there need to be a motion on that one. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda, number two is to discuss and take appropriate action to appoint election judges for the September 1, 2022 through August 31, 2023 term. And I think that you have that?
Yeah, it's... Each party presents us with a list of their judges that they would like to have put in place there, and we just accept that list unless there's some fault with the name.
In your package, you've got a list of Exhibit A with all of the judges, so all I need then would be a motion.
Yeah, I move that we accept the list of judge appointments.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Andrews to accept the list.
I have one question.
Okay.
Can a candidate be on this list?
A candidate?
Yeah, a candidate for the general election.
Good morning. I can answer that question.
That's a good question for her. It's our election minute. What do you think?
So if you see on there, there is a candidate under the First Baptist Church for the alternate judge, but we also have another person there to take that spot because he is a candidate on that, and so he cannot be a judge at that election, but in the future elections when he's not on the ballot, he can be. That's why there's an alternate person on there.
Like the bottom, okay.
Yeah, there's a little note explaining why there's two names.
Two alternate judges have been submitted to approval with the instance that one cannot work as an election due to the holding of a place in the ballot.
Yes.
So there is an explanation there of why you've done that, okay?
Yep.
All right, I'll second his motion then, if nobody else did.
Okay, yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Andrews and second by Commissioner Eagle to approve the appointment of judges. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Item number three, consider and take appropriate action to approve the proposed 2223 Hood County holiday schedule. I think you should have that attached to your... I think you should have that attached to your backups. Anybody get any discussion about that? If not, I would entertain an appropriate motion.
I move that we approve the proposed 22-2022-2023 Hood County holiday schedule as shown.
Second.
And second, that's by Commissioner Wilson, the proposal, and a second by Commissioner Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, say no, passes four zero. Thank you. Number four, consider and take appropriate action to approve the medical deductible reimbursement guidelines and request form for the 2022-2023 fiscal year.
Yes, sir, good morning. You've all received a copy of the form. This is the form that we plan to use for the 22-23 fiscal year unless you have any questions. I recommend approval.
Okay, anybody want to talk about it? If not, I would consider, look for appropriate motion.
Well, I think that, I'll just throw this out there, I think the way that this went down last, last year in State of County, a pretty significant amount of money on that. Has that number gone up anymore?
It has gone up a little bit more and I suspect it will probably in the next couple of months before, by the end of September, yeah.
Close enough, you're going to have.
Yes, and it will remind everyone during open enrollment that week when we start talking about the medical reimbursement. I think it'll remind some folks that they may want to check into how much they've paid towards the $3,000 deductible.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think this has been, been a great program, saved some money. I'll move that we approve the medical deductible reimbursement guidelines and request form for the 22-23.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Andrews to approve the medical deduction reimbursement guidelines and a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? If not, everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Prove four zero. Thank you. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Hood County Substance Abuse Council to use purple lighting, signs, and banners at the historical courthouse beginning August 23rd through September 1st, 2022 to bring awareness to International Overdose Day on August 31st, 2022. Do we have anybody here speak on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, why don't you come on up?
Thank you Judge Quinn.
Tell us who you are and what this is.
Forgive me, I'm new to this and.
That's okay.
Everybody told me I wouldn't have to talk today and I'm pretty shy, but even Judge Quinn said that, so.
You'll do fine.
So what questions do you have that I might be able to give to you?
Yeah, just tell us what your program is.
Awesome, yes, sir. So Hood County substance abuse has been around for about 11 years at this time. I am the new director for them. Teresa Turner has retired, so she's doing grandkid stuff now, so I'm in the seat. So one of the things that we are doing, this is one of our bigger things that we're going to be doing this year, is basically bringing attention to overdose awareness day. The reality is, is that as time moves forward, we're realizing that drug addiction actually is no different than a disease as diabetes. So we do talk about diabetes and the awareness of that and how to help prevent this illness and treat it as well. So I think that's just as important for us to also acknowledge. So with that being said, purple is the color, so we want to light up the house to bring awareness so the community will be interested in what it is that we're doing. And in the signs we'd like to put out, we'll have some statistics, like for instance, every three minutes, about 263 people die every year from an overdose. So I think that's really important. People don't know the statistics to that and if we can put these things in the light, then we can help solve those problems. The actual day is August 31st, which is the day that we will have guest speakers come out. We will have one speaking on recovery and one speaking on prevention and we will actually have some luminaries there so people can actually do a memory to people that they've lost from overdose. And then we roll right into September, which is recovery month. So it's a time of healing, time of acknowledgement, so we can do education and prevention and that's what our program is designed to do. We work with youth from elementary all the way up through high school to build leaders and create a good foundation for these people because, let's face it, our children are our future. So with that being said, we, you will see more of us within the community doing these type of things so that we could just bring awareness and education to them.
Very good, I think it's a great program.
Thank you, we're really excited, we're doing extremely well. We have a lot of great teen programs that have expanded. We had two last year, we have seven this year, going all the way through Toler, Premier, the middle school and high school. One great thing about us is that we encourage our high school kids to create community projects that is their thing and then they are eligible to earn a scholarship through us to take to trade school or college. Last year we gave out two $1,800 ones. One of the girls created a book, a library and a reading community for one of our low-income communities, so, project. So they're doing great things.
Great, you've done this before, we've had this last year.
Yes, sir, we've been around, we've been around, but thanks to God and awesome volunteers and awareness, we're actually getting out more and more now, so you're going to see more of this space.
What's the name that goes with that face? Did I miss that or?
Yeah, well, you can't forget it, it's Heather Kugel. We don't Google it, we Kugel it in our house, okay, guys? So, so, yeah, so, don't forget that, guys.
Good, and you, so you know our maintenance supervisor Jay Riley, he helped you with the lighting and electricity, so.
Yes, sir, I've been working with Beth and Brenda over at Judge Bassengill's office and he said he's more than happy to help us. We're going to actually buy the lights and put those out there. The luminaries that we're going to have, we're actually going to use flameless ones, make flameless candles to go down in those. And they will stay there through the night of the 31st and into the 1st and then I'll have them all picked up on September 1st.
Sorry.
It's okay, it's the boss.
Disrupting myself. That was me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, I would accept appropriate motion.
I move that we approve to allow the Hood County Substance Abuse Council to use purple lighting, signs, and a banner at the historical courthouse beginning August 23rd through September 1 to bring awareness to International Overdose Day on August 31, 2022.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve the Substance Abuse Council, purple lighting and so forth, and a second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, passes four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed tax rate for tax year 2022 fiscal year.
Each of you.
I've got one speaker on it, but why don't you go first?
I passed out a form for each of you with three separate tax rates.
Yes, you did.
This information, I'll give you one, Kay, I got, there's a pile of them over there. Sorry, I didn't get you one earlier. Or you have mine. The information on this form comes from the Appraisal District Information and also Form 50-856, that's the state of Texas form for calculating property tax. The rate given to us by the Appraisal District is .343150, which would increase the levy by $844,969 or .03%. That's the rate that they, that is the rate that they say is the no new revenue rate. That is per their calculations. Per the money we need that we can manage to take care of the county business is .331129, which is a decrease of $61,424 or .002%. That tax rate would, although it is a decrease, the average homeowner that had a $300,000 home would pay $7 a year more in property tax. The third rate is the property owner would pay nothing, they would pay the same amount they paid last year, but we would have to come up with over $200,000 to get to that point. This is a proposed rate, we'll still have to have another meeting to discuss it, but I need a proposed rate for the newspaper.
Then we're going to have another public hearing on it then?
We will have a public hearing. If I can get this information to the newspaper today, the public hearing will be at the next court meeting.
Well, it's, yes, it does say the proposed, okay, so the agenda item is regarding a proposed tax rate. So what you need from the court then is us to propose one of these tax rates.
Yes, sir.
Or one, or another one if we wanted to. Any, any discussion about those? Anybody want to talk about any one of the rates? Does anybody want to talk about any of those rates before we go to a motion?
I just wanted to, I asked Ms. Kidd to put the zero sum on this sheet myself because I wanted it to be published of, you know, the rate that we would be talking about if it meant, if it would be a zero effect on the taxpayer from last year based on the $304,000 home. And she, and she indicates that that would leave us, that we would need to come up with another $200,000. And my response to that was that we need to cut another $200,000 somewhere. And we haven't finalized the budget yet, so I think everybody needs to, based on that zero-sum balance rate, that everybody, all the department heads and all the elected officials need to go back to their respective departments and figure out where they can cut. And I want to echo some, some statements that, some of the statements that were voiced earlier by Ms. Samuelson. The U.S. household debt right now is at an all-time high pushing 17 trillion with a T, 17 trillion dollars. That's household debt. Credit cards, vehicles, all of it. Highest debt we've ever had. Mortgage rate has since January of this year, just in the last seven months, the mortgage rates have doubled, have gone from about 3% to nearly 6%. The inflation rate ending June 30th, 2022 was 9.1%. Expenses up, everybody's paying more in electricity, more, this costs more fuel for vehicles, groceries, and not to mention the effect it has on fixed income people. So I'm, I'm making a plea out here, I'm making a pitch to adopt, to propose a rate that would at least be a zero-sum net difference to the taxpayer this year compared to last year and ask that the departments in this county go back to their desks and sit down and figure out where they can cut $200,000 amongst all the departments. So that's my comments about the rate.
I like the idea, it's a, we're headed to recession, things are, things are looking bleak. I don't want to be, you know, Debbie Downer here, but I think that the real, the reality of the situation is it's coming. And if we can help the thing by not impacting the taxpayer greater than what we did last year, I think that that's a, it's a worthy goal. I'd like to see us shoot for that and, and make that effort. I know, I know you've been working hard on this Becky, this certainly isn't, no jab at you or anything, but we've talked about that and I would like to see us be able to not have any increase in impact on the taxpayer this year.
By cutting, going back to the zero, you know, I mean, I fully agree with Mr. Eagle. All the department heads need to reevaluate, make sure that they're asking for the right amount and they're trying to use, you know, their people and their resources appropriately. But with the increase in citizens moving into the county, that also increases services. So we can't, you know, there's certain services that possibly could be cut, there's certain services that can't be cut, and there's going to be needs for some of that. So there's got to, you know, to me, there's some happy medium between what, you know, is currently being stated as the county need versus zero increase. So, you know, we've got, everybody needs to go back and, you know, and look at it again and work it a little more, you know, sharpen that pencil, I guess, best way to put it.
Yeah, discretionary spending is where you got to go. Some things you can't cut. You can't cut the price of gasoline. You can't cut the materials you got to use to repair your roads. Can't cut it, folks, that's, those are fixed costs. Electricity, various things, about the only thing is a variable cost. You know what it is? Labor. Labor would be personnel and salaries. That's where you're going to have to get it if you want to take it out. That's my opinion. So, I mean, it's kind of up to the court to decide what they want to do. Is $7 a year a big deal for people? Might be for some people, some people can't afford $7 more a year. But it would, it kind of helps protect the next court. We take that down, remember, we're on a 3.5% cap on our revenue. And if you take it down now, the next year, if you need the money and the appraisals go down, you can't raise your, and expenses continue to go up, you can't raise your revenue more than 3.5% every year. And I think with the rate Becky that you gave us on the 331129, that's right at about 3.5% increase in revenue, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Didn't you tell me? So you've just about capped the amount of revenue that we're allowed to, to increase our budget with and we've got 9.5% inflation and you've only increased your revenue by 3.5%. I'd say you did a pretty good job. You didn't get close to what the inflation is doing to us if we're only increasing our revenue by 3.5%.
Well, and I'm getting emails from department heads already saying, you cut my budget and I need it. And I'm not responding because I was instructed to cut everywhere I could to get to this point so that we could have salary increases. So whatever you guys decide to do, I'll make it work. But I have, I have cut a lot. We've gone down this road before and I cut $700,000 out of the budget. This year, with careful planning, I cut nearly a million. So I'm, I'm trying, but I'm already getting people saying that I'm not going to have enough money, I, you shouldn't have cut my budget, so.
With that said, I would, if there's not any further discussion, I would.
Is there a speaker? I thought there was a speaker.
Is there? As a matter of fact, there is, yes. Nanette Samuelson, sorry.
I did have you there.
Just a question, you didn't mention what the net zero rate was. Ms. Kidd, when you were giving the three, you only gave two. What was the net zero rate?
The net zero rate is 328800, .328800.
Okay, thank you. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak. As I mentioned earlier, taking a small haircut on the proposed increase to 36,707,362 would put the county just below, and as, that's why I asked, because I had calculated that, the no net revenue rate and be close to the zero, net zero taxpayers, to taxpayers. This is very critical at this time as taxpayers are being squeezed at every turn. Just as an example, my daughter's daycare went up $30 per week per child. That's $240 a month and that's just daycare, that doesn't include all the other things that you guys have mentioned that are increasing. But she hasn't received a salary increase. So taking this modest haircut in the proposed budget increase allows the county to continue to provide essential services and provide substantial salary increases to county employees. This is one of those rare times that you can create a win-win. You can create a win for the county and the taxpayers. Thank you.
You have anything else Becky?
No, sir.
Okay.
You just have to keep in mind what happens next year too. This, you go backwards and you pay for it for a long time.
Well, and I'd like to point out something else on that, that, that's, that's a little bit. That, that's, that's a little bit, a county can only increase revenue 3.5%, but if they don't increase that 3.5% one year, they bank that. So you can increase that amount next year if it...
Yes, and we've had that conversation, and the reason I don't like that is, you give them a really good rate this year, the next year, bam, you hit them hard. Be consistent, be careful, plan for the future.
Sure.
We worked hard to get to this rate. This is a good rate. That's just my opinion, for whatever it's worth.
No, no, no. I appreciate the effort that you've put in on this. I know that we've spent a lot of time talking back and forth on this, and, you know, I've got absolutely no qualms with what you've done on this. It's, you know, it's a work in progress.
Yes, sir.
And at the very least, I like the goal of trying to come away with that zero increase.
If I, if I might add, too, and this is, I appreciate all the work you've done. It's no reflection of how hard you've worked on this. I know you have, and I know you're caught between many different...
Personalities?
Yeah.
Many different personalities. I understand that.
It's awfully...
But I want to, I want to put this in perspective and at least get it on the record here, that the difference between the rate that you're proposing, the 331129...
Yes, sir.
Which would be a $7 increase in the average taxpayer's tax bill this year, and the 328800, which is my proposal, which would be zero-sum difference, you're talking, you're not talking about a penny difference. You're talking about .233 cents difference. And we have a budget that's this thick. I cannot believe that the people, the folks in their departments can't go back and look at their expenses from last year and their budget from last year. I know we've got some stuff, I know we have budget items that never, people have not even touched to this day, to this point in our budget cycle. There's some line items that are still 100% in there. So it's hard for me to believe that we can't make a, I hate to use this word, collective, but a collective effort here to work on that $200,000, to show that we're willing to, to do what we have to do. Because my philosophy before I ever got in office was, at least I'm going to talk about the federal government, is we give you 10% of our salary, you figure out how to live on it. And I think a lot of taxpayers agree with that idea, that you figure out how to live on what you get coming in. So I don't think we're talking about that big of a, I just don't see that big of a difference compared to, for the, in the rate, .23 cents to make a display here to our taxpaying citizens that vote us in and out of here, that we're going to try our best to get to a, at least not put any more burden on them than they had from last year. That's my comment.
All right. I can tell this is going to be a 2-2 vote, so, am I right?
No. We haven't called for a motion yet.
I jumped ahead of you. I'm sorry.
It's all right. That's all right. I want people to talk. And anybody else that wants to speak on it is more than welcome. I know that even if you didn't sign up, as a matter of fact, I'm the judge, and I can say you can speak on it. If you want to speak on it, come on up. We've got time. We're going pretty fast today, anyway. So, so I break the rules. Big deal.
I'd just like to say that I have to cut because of inflation. I don't want to be taxed out of my home, and that's what's going to happen if taxes keep going up. So please, consider us taxpayers and fixed incomes, please.
Again, this is a proposed rate. If you could possibly agree on one, I could get articles in the paper. If not, it's going to be put off for a month. Stop it, Dave. That's not funny.
Anybody else? If not, I would entertain an appropriate motion.
I'm going to move for the tax rate proposed to publish of .328800.
Motion by Commissioner Eagle to set a proposed tax rate at 328800.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
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 All right.
Okay. Motion fails for lack of a quorum, so we will deal with it at a later time.
Well, can we not put another motion out there?
Uh, well, I guess we can. Yeah, that one failed. Do we, do we have another motion? Anybody? Anybody want to make another motion? Okay. Thank you.
How about we go halfway between the two at 329164? I'll make that motion.
What, what, tell me that number again?
It's, it's 329164, and that's halfway between the 3288 and the 331129.
So that means we have to find $1,000 out of the budget to make that?
$100,000.
$100.
Yeah, it's, well, isn't it...
You'd have to cut another $1,000 out?
$100,000.
Isn't it 85? Because I think we're at 170 difference.
I'm sorry, $100,000, yes.
Again, I will make it work.
I'll second.
Again, it's also proposed.
Yeah. I have a motion by Commissioner Andrews to set the proposed tax rate at .329164, and a second by Commissioner Eagle. And a second by Eagle. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstain. Okay, so it passes three to an abstain. Is that right? Did I hear that right?
And your basis for extension, sir?
I still think we ought to protect the future courts, which I won't be here, so I didn't want to put them in a position to have to raise the tax rates next time enough that it's going to hurt the taxpayers, which I think is going to happen, that they're going to, you're not going to take it this year, but it's going to double it for next year. And that's what our county auditor says, and that's what I believe. So I'm going to abstain on that, because I won't be here to vote on it next year, anyway. So that's my reason.
Thank you.
Okay, so it passes. That will be a proposed budget of 329, .329164. That is it for that item. Item number six. Let's go to item number seven, and that is discuss and take appropriate action regarding setting the salaries of elected officials pursuant to Local Government Code 12152.013.
Again, this is one of the items that has to go in the paper prior to actually voting on it. It is a proposed salary. We've discussed 5%. You guys haven't had a raise since October 1st of 2019. At some point, the appointed people will make more, and nobody will want your jobs. Not that anybody does now.
Just for clarification.
But, again, we've worked really hard to get to a point where it is budgeted, and it is. I just need you guys to agree on it, on an amount.
Anyone want to talk about it?
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
Go right ahead.
So, this has been, this process on the raises for elected officials. We pub, we did publish up to 5%, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I struggled with that from a policy standpoint, that I, from, from my perspective, and my political policy standpoint. But I, but I'm going to kind of put a but in there. No raises were given last year to, to public officials, that we voted no raises. The year before last, we voted no raises. And as Ms. Kidd talked about, the last time that public officials have received a raise was in 2019, so we're three years out from that. And if you do the math, that's 1.66% increase per year if we were to adopt a 5% raise today. Now, had we been able to get to a zero-sum net difference for the taxpayer on this last vote that we just did, I was, I was pretty well inclined to go with the 5%. Now I'm struggling again, because we didn't make that. And of course, that's a proposed rate as well. But I understand that, again, that our, our elected officials have not received a raise in three years. So that weighs heavily into the equation for me.
And they are asking. They are, they're really coming to me and saying, "Are we going to get anything?" So, you know, it's, they grow weary. And again, it's proposed. We'll work some more magic, get the tax, get the money down, and make it work.
My thought on this is, I went in this year, we've done a lot of work in the last few years to get, get new vehicles in here. We bought a lot of vehicles lately. And I think next year, that's, that's one of the areas that we trim down and thin out a little bit in order to be able to give these raises. So that's, 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 you know, a very simplistic model of what I would like to see, but I think that it's a, you know, a worthwhile endeavor and somewhere we can kind of make a trade-off here to make sure that we're still taking care of the employees with...
I will say that, you know, I'm in favor of the 5% for the elected officials, and if any elected official does not feel like they need that increase, they have the right by state statute to give some of that back to the county. That's legal. Or they can do, as I do, and that's 10% of my gross monthly to charities within the county. Last year, my average was 12.4%, not 10%, which is what I stated. And I'm going to bust that this year already. So if somebody feels like they're being overpaid at an elected official, they have those options. Thank you.
All right. Which one of you is going to be brave enough?
Anything? Anybody else? Anybody else want to talk? That case, I would entertain a motion for a proposed salary for the elected officials.
Of 5%.
Or whatever they want to propose.
I propose that we accept the 5% for elected officials.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve a 5% increase for elected officials. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Andrews.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you very much.
You don't know how much I can, thank you.
Hey, the court, the court always comes together and agrees on something.
Thank you, thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.